Good evening. Start with the call.
But it's more expensive than Condon.
So, there's no debate. You've got to be careful of prints.
Sherrell Fuller.
Here.
Thank you. Dan Nichols.
I am here.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Rick Pavanato.
And they do take... Rick, here.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
They do take...
And Ariel Johnson.
I don't think it's been bothered.
Okay, we have a call must stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, happy fall. Yeah, it feels like it out there. Let's start with the... Okay. I thought this would be... Okay. You let me down right there. Let's start with, we need a motion to approve the minutes for the May 20th, 2019 business meeting and the May 20th, 2019 closed meeting.
So moved.
Terry moves?
A second.
I think it was Mike said it.
Terry Pavasich. Mike Davenport.
Yes, aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nichols.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Kapka.
Aye. The minutes are approved. We're going to move on to the first reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities from comments to the audience. This first is intended for members... Audience members who want to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Does anybody want to address? Okay. All right, moving on. We'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent, Dr. Thielie, ISBE Consolidated District Plan.
Good evening, everybody. This first item, I'm turning over to Gina.
As the board may recall, I introduced the Consolidated District Plan in April and kind of explained what that would consist of. It is a plan that covers pretty much our general education grants as well as our IIEL grants and special education grant as well. The plan consists of... Well, there are several steps that you must do. One of them is a needs assessment, which we did, and there were several different groups that looked over data, answered questions, analyzed the data, made recommendations, as well as a series of questions that we must address in the plan itself. So I created the summary to hopefully summarize the contents of it because it would be numerous pages to print, and I'll kind of just go through the summary quickly, but I will take some time to point out some things that have changed. Okay? So, one of the sections is called Student Achievement and Timely Graduation. This is nearly identical, this section, to some of the questions that were in the Title I plan that was approved a year ago. So it may seem very familiar. That section kind of talks about and asks questions related to what opportunities do we provide students, as well as how do we ensure that students can meet the requirements to graduate, and specifically graduate on time. And so, I listed some of the programs that we offer. Many of them are familiar certainly to the board. Some new things that we're offering that are in this plan and that were not in the Title I questions related to it. For example, the project Lead the Way Principles of Biomedical Science course, which students can get college credit for if they complete it and do well on the end of course assessment. So that's certainly one that's new in that section. Some of the programs that we offer the board has heard about before, like Read 180 and Avid, Strive, which is an after-school tutoring program. This section also specifically asks us to address some of the needs of our English language learners, our ESL students, and special education students, and we list out some of the courses that we provide, some of the supports. For example, we have a summer EL enrichment program for students to work on their English and certainly engage in some activities here at school. Also talk about some of the computer programs that we have with students and how they directly link to instruction. Foster Care Transportation Plan was submitted several months ago, but that's also a section in this Consolidated District Plan, and they're literally the same questions that were in the foster care plan because this is a consolidated plan. And the questions really kind of focus on how are we going to meet the transportational needs of students in foster care? And so obviously, a team of support services would analyze what transportational needs there are, if those could be met certainly through our regular bus runs, and if not, then the district would provide transportation for those students. Another section relates to college and career readiness, and the board certainly has heard many times and many of you have experienced some of the ways in which we ensure the students are college and career ready and how we transition eighth grade students, students who just graduated eighth grade, our incoming freshmen, to becoming freshmen in our schools. And so some examples of that are our incoming freshman orientation night, we do articulation with our sender schools, both schools host the principals, assistant principals and counselors from the different schools. We have a long recommendation process that includes many, many indicators, and then we have kickoff events that occur pretty much a week before school starts. In addition, we are working to ensure that our students have a four-year planning process while they're here and they're ready for what comes next. So, some examples of that is our four-year planning program that all students start with. Certainly, they do different career and personality assessments, we have financial aid nights, we have college and career centers, college counselors, students go on college visits. We have worked with a pathway with Benedictine University, in fact, spent some time this weekend looking at the data from that, and we had several students who did... Who just graduated, are attending Benedictine in the fall, and met the criteria to avoid placement testing and directly be admitted into college bearing courses. We also are doing a pilot with College of DuPage, the same purpose for mathematics specifically. And then professional development is another component. We have several multi-day workshops in the district that include assessment literacy, cooperative learning, differentiated instruction, Literacy 99. Those have been obviously in existence for several years, many years for some of them. We also are working on our equity and inclusion programming and CED, which is a program we have in the evenings. You've heard Dr. Lang speak about personalized professional learning and that focus for this upcoming year. And then obviously, we send teachers to various conferences, and specifically, our English language learner teachers, our ESL teachers, attend multiple conferences a year to ensure that they're up to date and can meet the needs obviously of our students. Another section is safe learning environment, and as you know, we have Positively North and Mustang Way. We also are working on equity and inclusion, which was an area that was identified in our needs assessment by our teachers. We had a team on each side of town. We have a Spanish-speaking home of school liaison at North High that we've had for several years, and then obviously, we do different lessons and have an in-school intervention program. Title I programming is where things are changing. As you may recall, we used to be able to use Title I funds at North High School. Only South was technically a Title I school. We had applied for a waiver with the U.S. Department of Education to use Title I funds at North High, because our schools are fairly comparable. And when we first were issued the waiver, which was, I believe, approximately 10 or so years ago, our percentage of free reduced lunch students in each building was fairly close. It was around 6%, give or take. And there's a section in law that says that you must... That if you're within 10% of the two buildings within 10%, you can apply for a waiver. So, we were issued the waiver and applied, and it was renewed, but expired, and I reapplied and got rid of the 10%. So we were at 12.3%. So that's one change in Title I. Another change for us, which is really a positive change in my opinion, is that South High, because the percent of free reduced lunch, which as of a couple of weeks ago was 28.3% at South High, falls within obviously the 20 to 40% range. Schools that have a 40% or higher free reduced lunch percent can be Title I school-wide schools. Schools that fall under the 40% run a targeted assistance program. But the state, several years ago, made this provision that schools could apply for a waiver, schools that fell between... Or that fall, excuse me, between 20 and 40%, which is 28.3%. So we applied for that waiver, and it was granted last week. So we will be working, Ed Schwartz, Georgia Hash, and I will be working along with and will include others. We did an extensive needs assessment for the Consolidated District Plan, and I purposely did the needs assessment by building as well, because I anticipated applying and going down this route, so it made sense to do it all at the same time. It was an extensive process, but in the long run, I think it has paid off, and so we'll be working on a school-wide plan that we will bring to the board probably in July. What school-wide will enable us to do is to use funds for more purposes, for more students, for all students in some cases. Right now, as a targeted assistance program, we can only use our resources for at-risk students, however we define that, for at-risk students, those students that are failing, for example, students that are not meeting state standards, for example. But with a school-wide program, it gives us much greater flexibility and more options, so we can use the funds for other purposes. So some examples of that could be using the funds to support test prep strategies for students in English III, or providing tutorial service for students who are taking AP classes, or sending teachers that are not just Title I teachers, in other words, working with Title I students, to professional development conferences and workshops. So that's another change. It is reflected in the Consolidated District Plan because our waiver was approved. We're in the process of writing a school-wide plan, which I will bring to the board for approval.
Can I just...
Sure.
Just make sure I understand. First of all, thank you. Thank you. And for everything that's done for students. This will fall only to South, though. North no longer because of the 12%... 12 point whatever, no longer qualified. Okay. Thank you again.
Please know, however, that not this summer, because the numbers are not going to change obviously, but next year and in subsequent years, I'll be looking at the numbers. I'll be pulling the numbers. If we fall within the 10%, I can reapply. So we will be monitoring that. I don't want you to think that... That we certainly would like to be able to continue to use funds.
Oh, sure.
So we'll monitor that, but we were over 12%. And I calculated a couple of times on different dates to see if there'd be fluctuation, and there was a little bit, but you know, 12.3 to 12.4 didn't give...
But thank you for doing that, and this is really going to be helpful, I think, to so many students.
It is. It really is. One of the other things that we're planning on doing and using Title I funds for, we could do this whether we have targeted assistance or school-wide, but I think it'll be really good, and this came out of the needs assessment. This was brought up by administrators and by teachers, which was really interesting. A little bit different setting in which it was brought... They were brought up, but we're going to hire a part-time interventionist. So basically, a staff member who works with a small group of students, primarily freshmen, sophomores. Again, one of our goals is ninth grade on track. We want our students to matriculate to the 10th grade and meet those standards, and we want to catch our students early. That will work with students, work with teachers, work with the home, be really intensive and deliberate about their work with those students that are not meeting standards. So that is a position that we're planning to post soon and will be different in the way in which we spend our funds. So the two main changes, in terms that are outlined in the plan, both relate to Title I. The first one is obviously, North High can no longer use Title I funds. The second one is that we can expand the use of Title I funds at South High through a school-wide program, and I'll bring that school-wide plan back to the board. I know that's a lot of explanation.
A lot of work.
Any other questions? Gina's done a lot of work on this, so thank you, Gina, for all of your work.
Yes, thank you. Very impressed.
And this is up for approval later on this evening.
Lacrosse.
All right. Lacrosse returns from last month, just to make sure there aren't any follow-up questions. I received no questions from board members.
No.
So, we'll take any questions that are out there, but once again, this is up for action later on this evening.
English Department?
English Department novels. A few years ago, we went to bidding out English Department novels and working as a district to pull this in. Mark and his team, and I think Juree's done a lot of work on this in pulling together a bid for this, so Mark will talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, we keep getting better performance out of this bid, and we're getting more people or more companies interested in bidding on this. So this last one, if you roll it up a little and show the chart part of it, there we go. The bidder, Book Pal, at $118,000. They're actually a California-based group, and that's where they operate out of, but they actually have... And they actually have an Illinois warehouse where they do some of their informational spreads and also the release of the different books. They got really great references. One was at Northwestern, that lady's been using there for nine years. They customize the books, they get the books... They work with the printers and the publishers to actually sometimes imballast the books with their seal and things like that. And this company, she says, just really is great at support and service. So, we're really happy to see a nice low bid, so we're recommending you, approved Book Pal, for these novels. It's a pretty complex order, a lot of pieces to it.
And a side note, I had asked Hank, because I went to a... First of all, did anybody have any questions for Mark? I had gone to a presentation, and Scars was there, and I asked what happened to our old books that are... Because our students get the novels, and they go to other students, and they go to Scars, and they go to...
Other schools. Or to other schools, yeah. We have a variety of different charitable organizations.
So they don't just end up with our students and then are left behind?
Doesn't go to landfills. Yeah.
So, it's all print books, not anything on their Chromebooks?
Yeah, these are the print novels.
Yeah, these are the novels that all... Each kid gets, and they're able to mark them up, do whatever they want to them, and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Just part of it, they have to annotate and marginalize.
No other questions?
Bulk purchasing, CMG supplies, yeah.
Jim, on a yearly bid for CMG supply.
It's really hard to follow the great Gatsby with floor wax, but...
How long were you planning that? How long were you...
He's been working for weeks. He tried to mice and mad.
These things come in my mind so quickly, Nancy.
We love you, Jim.
Thirty seconds.
Floor supplies.
Oh, boy. Okay. Each year, we do custodial maintenance and grounds supplies. We've done it for many years now, so we try to buy it in bulk to try to get better pricing district-wide and also keep our products standardized. Each year, we're getting better. This year, 18 vendors submitted bids. What we're seeing is the competition's still getting more aggressive and more aggressive. We're getting better unit prices each year, even though the economy's each year getting with a higher rate, we're still getting low pricing. So this year, a little higher in our overall, but that's because we had overstocked supplies and eliminated them last year, so it was a little lower last year. This year, we're going in, restocking and replenishing that. So a little higher, but unit costs are still about the same as they were last year, so that's good, still saving lots of money. So 18 bidders reviewed the bids, vendors meet our requirements, and it's within our budget. So that's bulk purchase.
Questions?
That's also up for action later on this evening? Copy paper?
Copy paper.
All right.
Only the exciting ones for Jim.
These are great. This one actually really is exciting because we got some savings here, and that's for the last couple of years. We're starting to really see the difference with the... When we replaced our printers in our buildings, and this year, we're really seeing it. So, we threw out the 14 suppliers, almost all of them put in pricing. This is for recycled white and colored paper. We've seen a decrease this year for both combined total, and Mr. Stanley, be proud of me, I should have put a chart and graph together for this one. 6.34% decrease, so that's great. And the big one is the white paper. Last year, we ordered 1,930 cases, and this year, we're ordering 1,500. Once again, that's a 22.28% drop.
Yeah.
Very impressive, Mr. ...
That's phenomenal. It really is. And also, the bottom line price then dropped, so we're doing well. Our program is working. Still the same quality paper that we're ordering, so all good news. Midland Paper, matter of bid requirements, they were also the winners last year, so they're winners again this year, and under our estimated budget number for copy paper.
Very good. So, you know, just one of the things, we were concerned when we went to Chromebooks, that people were still printing out so much, but obviously, I'm thinking that contributed to the fall.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think they're getting used to it.
Which is what you predicted.
Yes. We predicted that it would take three to four years to really start to feel it change, because, you know, people's habits have to change, so...
Were you going to say something, Terry? I walked right over.
No, no. I was going to say the same thing. I think our Chromebooks are saving us a lot of paper and that, so that's a good thing.
Mr. Facility Plan?
Will continue the Jim show?
In progress. Nothing to show today as far as bids. We did have a bid last week on the 12th. I'll be bringing those results to you at the 7:15 board meeting. We also have an opening, a big opening, on July 3rd here at the district office. I'll be bringing those as well to you on July board meeting. So, little lull in the bidding and back to aggressive in July, and that'll be for Phase B for moving forward.
I was shocked when I looked at the Friday update, which I know you're going to tell about. I was shocked.
We can just go right into that master facility plan progress.
Shocked at all the work that was done.
Yeah.
So, now going?
Yeah, it's pretty impressive if you walk north and south in the areas that are under construction to see... Well, north, they're already got classrooms starting to get walled out in the new White Gym. Steel is up in that space, offices are starting to show up, loading dock is poured. It's really moving along. I think they're slightly ahead of schedule. If I say that with...
Everybody else I know, everybody's behind schedule.
But yeah, with all this rain we've had.
Yeah.
Well, and I will say that we have seen some huge benefits with the design-build model already. There was... I'll tell you a little story. At North, when they opened up the 1928 wall that borders the 1938 wall in the White Gym, which is where the steel was supposed to go to support the second-floor classrooms, there was an anomaly inside of that wall that they did not expect to have happen, so they had to redesign the entire steel build, but the steel was already laying on the floor, like it had already been purchased, delivered, designed to be there in a certain way. The architects worked with Jim and our team over a weekend, and by Monday, had a new plan laid out where they could use the old steel, retrofit it in such a way that it would still work. If you didn't have the design-build model, that could have taken a lot more time, and it could have resulted in one of the two sides saying, "Nope, just order new steel, that there isn't a solution here," and start from scratch, which would have put the project very far behind. So it's been good to see that actually working. Everybody's in the room trying to solve problems. Over at South, we have been somewhat delayed with the field because of...
Yeah.
The second coming of Noah out there.
Isn't there a pool? You've got outdoor pool now?
Yeah. We were also slightly delayed by the fact that there was a storm basin and storm sewer pipe running through the middle of that field that nobody knew was there, that wasn't on any of the village's drawings, and we had to find out how to account for that and how to move forward with that. So, we ended up replacing that system since it will help us with our own drainage in that area. It's beneficial to us. But that's another one where, wow, open up the ground, and that's, you know, very surprised of what we find there. But now that we've had a few weeks of not-as-wet weather, we're catching up out there. Inside, if you saw the pictures I shared with you last week, A Wing has been completely gutted, and is it B Wing is where the Life Skills?
Classroom.
Yes.
Those rooms all opened up and getting ready. I am continually impressed by the amount of asbestos we find and have to remove, but that was one of the things we knew would be the advantage of this project, would be we'd get a lot of that out of our buildings. So we're at the point at South where in the interior parts, walls are going up, ventilation is all in place, I think, at this point. They're really moving along quite quickly. If you drive across the front of South, you'll see that the whole parking lot has been torn up and is ready for the new lot to go down. The canopies are down, and you're about to see the face over by the cafeteria disappear as we get ready for the new windows and security entrance that'll show up where South is. So you're... Pretty soon, you're going to see the whole face kind of disappear over by the cafeteria. You'll see a temporary wall behind it, and then the new glass go up. So there... I believe today, they were pouring footings for all of that work, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, all the concrete trucks were out there, so...
So that's pretty cool.
Yeah, moving along quite quickly. It's crazy for me to see... Last week, when we were in there, demolition was going on on one half of the A Wing while new stuff was coming up. So, it's crazy how fast they work and how efficient they are at doing this work, so a lot underway.
We need a time-lapse camera.
They are taking a...
Oh, are they doing that? Because that is really cool to see.
Yeah, and I've shared the Google folder with you, where all of our team is kind of consolidating photos, which we'll eventually share out... Well, we're sharing out on our Facility Fridays, and we'll share out, you know, some of the time-lapse stuff so people can see the progress.
And I can't tell you the number of community members that keep going, "What's going on over there by the sign?" And I keep telling them that we're not getting the electronic sign, so...
Swimming pool. Swimming's bad for the last month, the swimming pool.
You know, so confession, at the south end of that new field, the netting that we're going to have there was a bit of a surprise to me in terms of how tall and its proximity to what's going to be the addition coming forward from the school at that point. I'm wondering...
We talked about it at some point, but I've lost track of all.
I did not register with me, so when I saw that go up, I was like, "Whoa, that's going to affect the look of things there a little bit."
Little bit.
So it's... So remind me... So we've got it at both ends of the field. Why do we need it at both sides?
To... Because remember this...
Check the street.
The south side, or... Yeah, south side of that field is a softball field.
It is.
So, yeah, so we need to be able to contain... Yeah. It's not just footballs and soccer balls, it's larger projectiles, so...
I mean, it's the same netting that you would see on like the west field at North.
Yeah.
And Mike, when you see the finished product and the netting, you see right through it. You know it's there, but you're not going to get obstructed visually like I think you're thinking you're going to be.
Won't look like a fence.
You know, those are high poles, those are big poles. We actually approved extending them a little bit because we really were concerned, we didn't want any of those balls going out on 63rd whatsoever.
Yeah, so on the... Yeah, on the north end of it, I get it. On the south end, it was just... It's more than I expected and closer to the school than I expected that it was going to be, so anyhow, just confessing. Not much that we can do about it.
We did have a lot of conversations with them about if that obstructed our views at all, and architects felt like it wasn't going to diminish the design in the end, that your eyes will look past that to the building behind it.
And kudos for taking the extra step for safety.
You're right. I mean, that's...
That was one of my biggest concerns. You know, we had behind the goal an area, and it was a slight increase in cost to extend that, both east and west, and I really thought that was a good idea, and that's why I brought it to the core team for approval, because I think ultimately... it to the core team for approval, because I think ultimately, I don't want any balls going out there. I really don't. And if we have an accident, it just would come back, I would feel bad.
Well, we have outdoor instructional space at the first floor, just behind that. It's, you know, in their covered area, so that would be bad if somebody was out there working on an art project and got beaned.
Yeah, the idea of outdoor pottery and flying softballs.
It probably doesn't go together.
Don't imagine.
Yeah. Not a good mix.
No, no.
Anything else?
Gives new meaning to mixed media.
It's impressive. Moving along really quick. It's, I keep bragging about it to people in terms of the schedule, because every, you know.
I'm aggressive.
I mean, all the contractors I talk to, I got clients, I'm having trouble getting, I'm having trouble even getting bids in on projects, so.
I'll say, overall, both schools, the contractors have been key. We have wonderful contractors working this project this summer, and they're all working together, and it's a rarity to see that with the amount of work that needs to be done in such an aggressive timeline. That's what surprised me more than anything so far this summer, is everyone working together. And really, that's what makes it. That's how we're staying on schedule or a little ahead. And White's been great working with them.
And I don't want to minimize the amount of work that Jim, Mike, Reyes, Michelle Cannon are doing on this project. The White team continues, on a weekly basis, different people coming up to me telling me that that team is helping this project work, right? That there's no drama, that it's all about solving the problems, it's not about, like, if something goes wrong, we're not worried about who's to blame. It's about get through it. I mean, stuff happens in a project this big. It's about outcomes, it's not about anything else. So, the fact that all of those teams are working so well together has been essential.
Well, it's, you know, so all in all, it's a relief to some extent, you know? Because we thought we made a right decision, you know, but it's always early on when we discover whether or not things are really going the way we hoped that they would, so.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's.
Well, if you remember, last summer, we used what White designed and built to do the air conditioning project as a small taste as to whether or not this would be an effective model, and that came out on time, under budget, same type of thing, no drama project, which is what we want to see for the whole rest of the plan. So, it's held true to form as we've started here.
And we have their A Team.
We do have their A Team.
But we got our A Team too.
Oh, thank you.
We got our.
Are you Mr. T?
We only have an A Team.
We don't have a B Team.
And they're sitting around on this table.
Yeah, yeah.
The next thing.
Wait for the Mr. T comment.
We've got Dr. T.
There you go.
Oh, come on.
Were there any free information required?
Oh, yes, there were plenty. We had, how many did we end up with?
Six.
Six or seven.
More than one.
Seven, seven that we, we were getting them in at the final moments last week as we were putting this together. So, seven in the last month.
Okay, we're gonna move forward to the consent agenda. Is there any item besides the fact that once again we should recognize the Foundation for its continued support of our students and our activities, which we celebrated, I think, at our last meeting, didn't we?
Yes.
Anything else we wanted to pull out for discussion?
Can I just comment on that one?
Sure.
That, the Foundation graciously every year allows the superintendent to identify a major project that will affect students across the district, and this year, Rob submitted for this, which is really to further our deep equity work and our work with students. So, this will be a equity inclusion pilot program that we'll be looking at next year for some programming across the district with our students, so.
And you're presenting on that, are you? Or presenting on?
On the larger equity work, but this is a piece of that that we'll be talking about.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So, for the last several years, we've been focused on what's called deep equity. So, it's the idea, the philosophy behind it is that we want to meet every student where they are, who they are, and allow them to be who they are in our classrooms, and to value them as individuals, and to try to understand their story a little bit better, and to help them tell their story a little bit better. So, for the last several years, we've worked on professional development around the district and strategies for doing that, understanding what that is, building trust so that we can have these difficult conversations. And every year, we've kind of ramped this up a little bit more and added more time to this as the, you know, as we as an organization have been able to support that. Towards the end of last year, we started to include this work with a group of student leaders so that we could build similar programming directed specifically by students for students. So, this grant from the Ed Foundation helps support that work with students, and then this continues to be a strand that we will grow in as a district. How'd I do, Rob? Did I miss anything?
Pretty good.
All right.
Maybe a B+.
Thank you.
There goes the A Team.
After all, he is Dr. T.
He's greater.
Anything else we want to talk about before we go through the consent?
No, the rest has all been presented to the board.
So, we are looking for a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes, A, the personnel report, appointment certified; B, the personnel report, retirement administration, retirement certified; resignation certified; retirements classified; resignations classified; C, the personnel report, termination classified; D, the personnel report, salary and benefits, wage increase classified; E, financial pages; F, acceptance of donation, District 99 Education Foundation grant; G, revision of board policy 3.51, Associate Superintendent for Student Learning, yay; H, resolution of Board of Education, Board of Education of Community High School District 99 approving proposed amendments to the Page-West Cook Regional Special Education Association intergovernmental Agreement; I, the resolution of the nomination for membership on the Downers Grove Plan Commission; and J, the property and liability insurance renewals.
I would happily.
Terry moves.
Move.
He's moved me, Terry. Terry moves.
I'll second the motion.
Joanna, a bit seconds. Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye.
Consent agenda carries. Moving on to the recommendations for action. First, the approval of salary and benefits for administration. Do we have a motion for the Board of Education to approve a 3.1 overall salary increase for the administrative group of employees and an increase in benefits as detailed in Administrative Regulations 5.204 AR-1 Administrative Benefits for TRS Certified Administrators and 5.204 AR-2 Administrative Benefits Summary for IMRF Administrators?
So moved.
Mike?
Second.
Dan.
Thank you.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the superintendent's compensation for 2019-20. We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve a 3.1 increase on the base salary of the superintendent's contract from $230,000 to $237,130 and a $10,403B contribution.
So moved.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the Illinois State Board of Education, is to be consolidated district plan. Motion for the Board of Education to approve the District 99 Consolidated District Plan as presented for submission to the Illinois State Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, Dan. Thank you. Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. We're moving on to D, the approval of lacrosse as a District 99-funded sport starting in 2019 through 20. We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve lacrosse as a District 99-funded sport starting in 2019 through 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Terry and Mike. Thank you. Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Congratulations, lacrosse. Okay, E, award of the bid for the English Department of Novels, 2019 through 20. We need a motion for the Board of Education to accept the lowest responsible bid of $118,794.32 from Bookpale to provide novels in accordance with the specifications, instructions, and requirements provided in the May 17, 2019 request for proposal for Community High School District 99 English Department of Novels.
So moved. Joanna?
Second.
Terry?
Thank you.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. And we need a motion for the award of bid, bulk purchasing CMG supplies, which I shall ever, forevermore think of as, it's a great gasp, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the award of contract for custodial maintenance and ground supplies to the noted vendors in the aggregate amount of $137,706.61.
So moved.
Go ahead, Dan.
Dan.
Go.
Dan?
I'll second.
Terry? Thank you. Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. And finally, the award of the bid for copy paper, 2019-20. We need a motion for the Board of Education to approve an award contract to Midland Paper, Wheeling, Illinois, for copier paper for fiscal year 2019 through 20 in the amount of $55,763.2.
So moved.
Sherrell? All right, Sherrell. Second the motion.
Thank you. Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Trey Pavasich.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Motion carries. Everything carried. Thank you all for all of your work. We know this was, so much work has been done, and just congratulations to everybody who is here.
Thank you.
And we're grateful for you all. Okay, and moving on to the second, do we have anything else to insert before the session?
We have no older or new business, reception of visitors.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? Hearing non, we're gonna go on to communications and announcement, report on legislative education network of DuPage, Lend.
We haven't had a. No meetings.
No meetings.
No meetings, but I did send out in last week a synopsis of legislation that had passed in Illinois. There is a lot.
Yeah.
So, we're still waiting for rulemaking, well, first approval by the governor on a lot of different things, and then rulemaking to come through, but I would imagine there's gonna be some significant ripple effects throughout education in Illinois in the next few months.
Is that, Dr. Thiel, is that having to do with all of the new policies that?
Yes. Yeah, all the new laws, yep, will result in new policies for the district.
Okay. I, yeah, I just, yeah, the ones that we are reading through. Okay, we'll have that through, yep. All right.
Okay. Joanna, did you have anything to?
I did go to the session meeting. I was not where I was supposed to write a report about it, but I will do so the next time. I mean, I kind of sat there and didn't even know what was happening. It was.
It's gonna, it's gonna take a while, and you don't have to write a report, and you will get something called the Executive Director's.
Communicate.
After your meetings that gives a summation of everything important that happened.
Okay, I saw that, and I go, okay, so that's, I'm supposed to use as notes, and I just prepare a little verbal something?
If you'd like to.
Thank you.
If there's nothing.
I'm so sorry, everyone. I didn't realize it till I heard the first one. I go, uh-oh.
Strike one.
I'd rather just mess up and clean it than fake it.
A lot of times, there's nothing substantive to report, and then you just say there's really nothing substantive.
Well, I said.
A lot of it's just businesses.
Okay.
Businesses.
Are we talking about?
The SAS head meeting and report?
Okay, yep.
Or not.
I'm back with you.
District 99 Education Foundation.
We have a lot of exciting things going on right now. We welcomed two new board members.
Yay!
Last meeting, yes. And thank you, Sherrell, for sending them in our direction.
Ooh, you broke, Sherrell.
Donna Dawson is a community member, and she is retired from McDonald's, 37 years of service there, and her son Brian graduated from South High in '18. And Stephanie Williams is also a community member, and she runs a non-for-profit organization, and her daughter will be attending 99 in 2020. So, we have a little bit of variety of folks, and there is still opportunities for anyone who would like to volunteer to join the foundation. Like I said, please contact Julia Beckman or at beckman110@comcast.net. We are revamping our website this summer, so hopefully by fall, you'll be seeing a new, latest and greatest of the Foundation. And in September, we will be doing a mailing, and as a board member, I would like to see 100% participation of our board in showing that you support the Foundation, and any contribution would be accepted. But it looks really good to see all of our board members' names as a support of the Foundation. And so, I'm giving you the, the push now, because in September, we're gonna be asking for sure. So, you know, think about that. It's really important.
So, Terry?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I got an echo, so I'm sorry. Were you done?
Yeah, you sound good. Go on.
Okay, I didn't know if she was done. I have an echo, so I apologize for jumping in there.
No, that's fine, that's fine. That's all I have.
Okay.
So. Have something, Cheryl, to say?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that September mailing, is that solicitation for donations? And how is that different from, is that different from what you guys have done in the past? If you can elaborate on it a little bit more so that we can understand what is the ask of the community? And I think it's a donation, and how is it different? Is this something new you guys are trying?
This is gonna be our annual push, and it'll be a, an ask letter, and we're gonna start doing it every fall to kind of get.
Is this different than what you've done in the past, though?
No, it's a little earlier than in the past.
Yeah, we usually do it maybe more in October, November area, towards the end of the year, so we're gonna do it in September this year, kind of get people, you know, before that big push at the end of the year.
It's easy to do. You can go on the website and do it.
Yeah, and especially when you'll wanna see our new website. That'll be really cool. And so when you're perusing the website, you can click on the give button.
So I haven't, oh, go ahead, Cheryl.
I was just gonna say, so Terry, that's by mail, and there could be a rule around emails. Do, are you all able to send email solicitation to or no?
Yes, yes. It will be email and snail mail.
Okay.
It'll be both.
Does the foundation still have, you remember how you used to be able to donate, like, tickets and?
We've stopped tics for cause.
Yeah.
Because nobody really gave.
Okay.
So, you know, we had to kind of eliminate things that really weren't working for us, and that was one of them, so.
So go deep and go often.
Absolutely, and we will take donations all year round, not just in September.
You know, this, this brings up, this reminded me of, you know, when we were going and visiting some other schools, and looking at other projects that White had done, and talking to those folks, there were, you know, for instance, I think it was the Black Box Theater at, at Nutria.
That was a little different, that.
Right, but it got, you know, but the idea that people could make some contributions, and there could be, you know, there could be some things done that way, I'm not sure how we, in that case, it was like a naming rights sort of thing, but, and I don't know that we're interested in going there.
No.
What was it, a family had made a substantial contribution, but it seems like in the midst of everything that we're doing here, there might be some opportunity for the foundation to.
That's what we're going to do.
We've talked to the foundation about after Phase A, we will have a list of things that we wanted to include but were eliminated due to budgetary reasons, or that were kind of additional asks that we didn't get to yet, and that'll happen as each phase goes on. We're planning on bundling some of those, taking them to the foundation. They want to raise additional funds for those specific projects, so we've already talked through that.
That's so effective. I've always, you know, my experience is in, you know, working with a lot of fundraising efforts over the years in nonprofit sort of things, that when people have something specific to give to, you have much more success generating the funds than to just say, we need money and we do a lot of good things for, you know, with that money. And so this is an opportunity, you know, a moment in time to take advantage of that.
You know, and right now, also with some of our main thrusts, you can donate to those, like the Avid Scholarship, you know, those, that's something that we do every year, and, you know, you can donate to that. You can donate to Young Hearts for Life, which is another one of our projects. And, and so, you know, if you want to ear tag, you know, money for those things, you can, but, and, you know, we also have the general fund that goes for teacher grants and for the superintendent grant, you know.
The bricks and mortar sort of stuff, though, and, and maybe looking at potential, there could be some potential corporate donations and that sort of things, where there's, there's, there's an attraction to it because there's high visibility to that philanthropy, right?